The public hearing is closed. This item will be our first item on the agenda. We'll get into our agenda for Tuesday, July 19th, 2011, starting at 6:04 PM. I will ask you momentarily to stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the United States flag, followed by the invocation. And tonight, I've asked a new citizen of our community to come and deliver the invocation, Dr. Rob Couch, who is now the senior minister at the First United Methodist Church here in Prattville. So now, if you'll rise and we'll give the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Let us pray. Gracious God, we thank you for being a part of such a wonderful community with a rich history and such wonderful tradition. We thank you for the many men and women who have gone before us, who have helped create such a wonderful place to live and in which to be citizens. We thank you for their hard work and their sacrifice. We thank you for your grace as you have worked through them. And now, Lord, we thank you for our opportunity, for our turn, to make this community better, to make the sacrifices necessary so that the entire community would benefit and to grow, and that we would sacrifice that which we have for the common good of all. We pray for our leaders. We pray that you would give them wisdom to put the needs of our community above and beyond all other things. And finally, God, we pray that you would bless our community. You would bless our citizens, our businesses, every person who makes Prattville home, and every person who comes here to work and to enjoy this wonderful place. We pray your blessing on them. We ask all this in your powerful name. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Couch. Y'all get an opportunity this evening. Welcome, Dr. Couch. He and his lovely family are here with us and hopefully will be with us for a long time to come. Madam Clerk, will you call the row?
Councilman Striplin?
Here.
Councilman Wood?
Yeah.
Councilman Argo?
Here.
Councilman Miller?
Here.
Councilman Renninger?
Here.
Councilman Bowles?
Here.
Councilman Fink?
I call this council meeting to order. The character trait of the month is thriftiness, making the best use of resources. Fellow councilmen, you should have received a copy of the minutes in the public hearing in the city council meeting of July the 5th. If there are no amendments or corrections, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes at this time.
So move.
Move by Councilman Striplin. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Argo. Any discussion on the approval of the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by raising your right hand. All opposition by light sign, seeing none, the minutes are approved. This time in our meeting, we come to public comments. We will accept comments and questions from general public pertaining to agenda items only at this time. After the agenda is completed, then we'll open the floor up for comments of a general nature. Right now, we'll entertain comments and questions about specific agenda items only. Are there any questions or comments from the public? Dr. Simmons. Dr. Simmons, I know you will, but please give your name and address for the record, and you may need to use this microphone.
Thank you. Dr. Jerry Simmons, 141 North Chestnut Street here in Prattville. Thank you for the opportunity to talk tonight. I wanted to touch base on two items on your agenda tonight. One is Resolution Number Two, and as I understand it, this would freeze the employee group health premiums for the entire year 2012. And so I'm a little bit puzzled as to why we'd want to do that. We don't know what the rates are going to be, but my hunch is, having dealt with Blue Cross Blue Shield over the years, my hunch is, just like last year, the rates are going to go up. So one of the questions I had is if the rates go up and you freeze those premiums, will the city be bearing the cost of those additional premiums? And having looked at the premiums and the rates, I realized there are ratios depending on whether you have a family plan, an individual plan, or even the city council, because the city council and the mayor potentially could utilize that insurance rate. So that ratio varies depending on which premiums you look at. And I realize that perhaps some of the employees would like a different ratio, and I would encourage you to come up with an agreeable ratio, but I'm not sure that freezing the premiums is the way to go about it. The other issue with that is since the council is covered under the health insurance, you may remember back when you were looking at cutting the insurance for the council. Your legal advice was that Code 1143-9 prohibited you from changing your insurance compensation anytime during your term. So one of the concerns I would have is if you should vote this in tonight, and then if the rates should go up and you've frozen them, then in essence, you've increased your compensation. So I would be concerned about a possible violation of that code. That's all I had on Resolution Number Two. On Resolution Number Four, as I understand it, the school crossing guards, the 19 would be higher, but it would also delete the sick pay and the life insurance benefits for these crossing guards, and it would limit the number of holiday school days paid, which surprises me. I think that everybody would agree that the crossing guards do a fantastic job, and there's no doubt in my mind that we need them. The only issue is, in my mind, who should pay for these crossing guards? The schools, of course, are a county school system, so that raises the question of, well, why are we paying for crossing guards that are a county school system? Why isn't the county paying for that? And of course, one of the answers I got was, well, it's always been done that way. And that doesn't justify, in my mind. And so I realize that sometimes we have crossing guards to help with the school buses. Sometimes we have crossing guards to help with citizens that want to wait to pick up their child. So I realize it's a mixed bag, but I would encourage some kind of sharing. I went and pulled the Board of Education's budget and their financials as of the end of May of this year. And as of the end of May, the Board of Ed is reporting 2.1 million in unreserved general fund balance. So that's pretty hefty. They have $9 million through the end of May in revenues in excess of their expenditures. And I haven't looked at our financials recently, but my hunch is that they're in much better shape than we are. So I would encourage you perhaps to work out some kind of sharing of that cost, because I just think it's unfair that we would cover all of those expenses. That's really all I had on those two items.
Thank you, Dr. Simmons. Are there any questions or comments for Dr. Simmons from the city council members? Thank you, Dr. Simmons. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to us on an agenda item? Yes, sir. Please come to the, well, I'll give you the mic, and identify yourself, your name and your address, please.
Thank you, sir. John Z. Lee, 819 Cottage Lane, Prattville. I'm a member of the police department, and speaking on behalf of the Police Department's Association, we respectfully request that you all do freeze the insurance rates at the current level. I don't want to go into all the sacrifices that city employees are already undertaking, but please do consider that. And in light of the fact that the city has not been contributing their amount into the account, we think it would only be fair not to ask us to pay more.
Questions, Minister Litt? I should say, Officer Litt?
That's fine.
Any questions at all?
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the councils on a specific agenda item? Okay, we'll move forward. Mayor, do you have a report?
Yes, thank you. What I'm going to start off with is I passed a photograph of some, recently, some drugs that we were able to take off the streets that were reclaimed over here at our police department during our 24/7 operation, whereas citizens could bring some of their outdated or unused prescription drugs. And that's just one photo of it. I think that's been one area that has really been very, a very good little program we put together, because that's just a small amount there, and it just shows that even though these are not narcotics or anything along that line, illicit drugs, this one photo right here shows approximately three pounds of pills that could have possibly been flushed down the toilet, which would have ended up in either our groundwater system, if they had had a septic tank system, or if it had been hooked up to our wastewater department, it would have ended up in our wastewater and could have prevented the system from operating like it should. So I just want to show the council there where some of our programs that we have recently innovated have proven worthiness, that we've just been a short while there, and it's showing some signs there that things are being taken off the street. And I think if we keep moving forward with things that we're doing, I think we'll see a great deal of improvement there. But besides that, I want to go ahead and bring up, last council meeting, I talked so much about the Fourth of July parade and the activities we had there, and complimented Kelly Cook, who was not here at that time. She had to, she was out on a vacation period at that time, because she had worked so hard. But she's here tonight, and I want to thank her one more time, since she is here, which we had, she had a lot of help along with that. The fire department, the police department, leisure services, you know, all of our departments together pulled together to help to get that done, not to mention our Fourth of July committee who raised the large amount of money that we needed to have that program going on. But thank you, Kelly Cook, and the people that worked behind the scenes with her. Another thing I want to bring up is at Daniel Pratt's birthday, we're going to have a wreath laying 9:00 AM tomorrow. We say July the 20th. Anybody who can come out, parade is up at the Daniel Pratt Cemetery. And after that, there's some other ceremonies down here in our museum, just right across the street from City Hall here. So if you can come to that, it'd be greatly appreciated. Okay, as far as what's on our agenda tonight, whereas Resolution Number Two, I'm going to ask that the council hold this until we get further information on our insurance rates, whereas the healthcare fund that was talked about earlier, the city has paid all claims that have come in on it. Whereas the, all the funding has not been put in there as timely as it could have, but all claims have been made. That has not affected our insurance account any shape, form, or fashion. But with this, personally, I just don't see where you have enough information to properly vote on this tonight. So if you could just hold this until we get further information in here somewhere around September. Not to mention that the Employee Insurance Committee, they were actually the ones who had recommended the rate increase, but there's also some other policies that might be coming up from them, and this would, this rate increase would not, would not start until the, until the beginning of next year. So there's no rush on this, and I think if we can just hold back on it and then go ahead and look, look at the big picture on it, the city employees have stepped up to the plate quite a bit, but right now, there's no urgency on this. So that would be why, my one recommendation on that is just please just hold it, so that way we can look at it and talk about it and make certain we're doing the right thing there. As far as Resolution Number Four, I respect Dr. Simmons for coming up here and everything, and he does, he has made some points about the, about the Board of Education, but him and I might have to disagree, just agree to disagree on some things. But I will tell you that I will look toward negotiating with the Board of Education toward this. But what we have done, the changes that we have made, there will be the same number of school crossing guards will be out there. That number is pretty much solid in there. That's what we're going to need to do, to do the, that's the number we're going to have to have to do the job properly. And the adjustments we have made will save approximately $27,000 off of the cost of last year. So I think that's a good deal for the city, and not to mention the, can you imagine the chaos that would happen if there, if you did not have the school crossing guards? I think there again, at this point in time, it's too late for us to go back and try to start some negotiations with the Board of Education at this, this time. So I'd ask you to go ahead and move forward on Number Four, Resolution Number Four. Resolution Number Six is, if you please move forward with it, that's our wastewater rate study. I have had several, and citizens of Pratt will be calling, has been calling us lately trying to find out, when is the study going to be done, because they have been paying the $10 surcharge. And I have spoken up here that once we get this rate study back, that it should hopefully bring that $10 surcharge off and go to a users' rate on there that will come out to equivalent of the same amount to the city, because this is, that surcharge brought us up to a point where we're running just in the black in that department, and we need to be able to run, not necessarily making a profit, but we need to be able to pay our expenses in that department, and also maintain proper equipment and infrastructure for that department. And as of right now, this is why we need this study, is to make certain that we are where we need to be with it. But if you can move forward with it, I've been in contact with the Jackson Thornton Department, who's going to be doing this study, and we will, we should have this study back inside of 90 days. But according to the resolution, it's going to give them 90 days to have this study done, and that we should be able to bring the rates down, hopefully, for the residents of the city of Prattville, and potentially raise them for the businesses. But that said, anything else?
Questions for Mike? Or some note?
This question's about the school crossing guards. Do you know who performs that function for those schools that are out in the counties? I mean, my natural assumption might be the sheriff's department, but I don't know that for a fact. And I don't know if there's any financial support for that from the Board of Education to whoever's doing it, whether it's internal or external, but that might be a good piece of information for us to consider.
Anything else for the mayor? Thank you, Mayor. I would like to recognize Mr. Richard Dennis, who's with us today. Mr. Dennis, would you please stand up? Mr. Dennis is the new principal for Prattville High School. We welcome you to our council meeting, and we look forward to cooperating with and enjoying PHS, the PHS football season.
Just excited to be here. I've lived here since 92, so I'm quite aware of the relationship between Prattville High School and the city. I want to thank you, I just want to make sure that you put a face, and know that you're invited anytime to stop in and visit. I don't know if you take calls, I'll have it, because I do. And we do welcome you coming to visit. Want to make obiters to you. I understand that the budgets are tight, and we're down on the hill up there, but the assistance that you, in Prattville High School, I do recognize that, and want to extend the invitation you to join us. Thank you, and I thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis. It's going to be interesting to see Mr. Dennis move from an Indian to a lion. I am going to, never mind, we're not to that point yet. We have a report on the status of the city finances. Mayor, are you or the finance director going to give that? Mr. Mosley? You will need the mic.
I'll put it in there. All right. I provided everyone with a revenue report and an expense reports on your, in front of you there. If you look at the revenue report first, most everything is pretty in line. As you'll see at the top right, we're 75% through the year. Most everything is running pretty close to that on percentages that we've received in. Several of these are over that already, so that's a good thing. It means we've, we're ahead of trend. We've received more than we expected to at this point for the year. One thing that you may notice at the bottom under other, there are a lot of different things in there. One of the things that was budgeted in that department, it was actually a grant for the OptiCom Traffic Signal Preemption Program. And that actually, the revenue for that is actually in the grant line item, so that's the reason it looks weird and says 45%. It's actually around 70% if you put that back in where it was budgeted. So if you look at that, nothing is below 64%. And with the sales tax increase, we should catch up pretty quickly on the sales tax budgeted amount. Overall, if you look at the bottom right-hand corner, year-to-date, we are up 8.91% for all of our revenue line items, which is not bad. Revenue growth of almost 9% in a sluggish economy. So fairly positive. If you switch over to the June expense by department, a couple of standouts. Again, the operations in the executive department, it's the same situation, as I've mentioned before, with the insurance and the travel allowance for the mayor, although he has not taken that check yet. He has, he's told me to hold off, because he doesn't want to take it yet.
The car allowance?
The car allowance, yes. Also in there, you'll see down in the finance department, under operations, it's over budget. That's primarily due to insurance as well as the audit. And we did interview auditors. We have narrowed the field down to four. We interviewed those last night, and I think we're going to hopefully bring at the next council meeting the name for who we would like to choose, and it's a vastly, is a significant cost reduction in that, for that line item. So that's a positive. Under city clerk, you'll see operations is over budget. That is also due to insurance. And a lot of these will change with the new budget I've gone through already, and change some of the liability insurance line items in the different departments, so they're accurately what they've been trending over the last several years. Under judicial, you'll see it's still over budget, just like it was last month. That is still due to the jail rent. And that is pretty much it for any of the line items that are really over budget. Most everything is running pretty close to what it should be by this time of the year. Several of them are under, which is always a positive thing. So I think we're on track to have a decent year this year and start to dig our way back out.
Would you look on the last page, there's shows?
Yes, sir.
It's 150% over budget. What cost that?
That is because of the two bridge loans that were taken and also the line, use of the line of credit.
Last meeting, you made a, last meeting, probably have the second bridge loan paid off shortly. Where are we? On that one?
We've paid $300,000 on it. We lack about $650,000 left. We're paying about $300,000 to $325,000 a month, so we can easily pay it off. We just moved money over there, about $25,000 over there today, so about $36,000, I believe. But we're kind, every week we move around $10,000 to $30,000 over.
Is that net, in terms of the government's?
That's paying, keep paying the claims. Yes, sir. And the goal, you know, we started off the year, the fiscal year, with a very high accounts payable balance. I think we all know that. And kind of my goal, and what I'm trying to do, is hold back the reins on a lot of the spending and keep, to get us at the end of this fiscal year where the account payable balance is not near as high. That way, when the business license revenue comes in, we can catch it up and the group health account up to where it should be, and then from then on, fund it the way it's supposed to be funded.
Ms. Mosley, one question on the, we had expensed $135,000, and this year we've expensed $128,000, but yet we don't even budget it.
The issue, the reason it's so far over budget is because for the last two to three years, there's two different parts of the jail rent. There's a standard rent that's a base monthly rate, and there's a usage part. The rent part has all, has been budgeted. The usage part was not, and that's the reason it's over budget. And it's pretty standard, but it varies slightly from month to month. I'm not sure yet. I've, I don't really handle that. That's out of the judicial department.
Well, we, when we start to have an idea about the revenue this company for coming from our amnesty, is it on amnesty board?
Up to date, yes, up to date.
And that, I mean, I guess my question is, has that important? Are the issues there, are, and should? A major, long-term revenue stores, that's a major concern.
Actually, with the sermon of the Lord, something has been more than just the amnesty program.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was going to say, is actually, the collection from the amnesty program has not been what we were anticipating, because there's approximately somewhere around $800,000 out there on the books. And for the record, since she was not by the microphone, it's been collected somewhere around $4,000. So in that, when you look at that picture, it's not been that successful yet. But on the other side of the coin is that with the publicity and so forth out there, we were seeing a lot more people come on up and paying some other claims, other fines that would, that were not on this amnesty list. So we are seeing on the other side of the coin, a lot more revenues from, from other fines and so forth, so.
About $10,000?
About $10,000 from early collections. Yeah, so.
At the end of the day, so far, is that going to be real, very modest?
Very modest, yes, sir. Yes. Right. It's, like I say, it's not been that successful as, as of today, but it's one thing, it's definitely, it's the chief and I are going to be working on, is making certain that any and all warrants that are out there, they're going to be working them. So it's moving in the right direction, though. Thank you. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, or questions? I'm very happy to be here, I'm very glad to be here. I just noticed on my, this year-to-date, we've got $29,300,000. Day, $35,000. Was that for company today?
Yes, sir. Through, through the end of June of 2010.
I don't have the best number, but I said the school on our budget started to begin last year.
That's about right.
So year-to-date, you've already spent $2 million over the last year, from the budget dollars? It's about, say, the $6 million so far this year?
That's about right.
So year-to-date, you've already spent two million over the last year from the budget dollar? It's about, say, the six million so far this year? Thank you.
You might need that.
Okay, we will get into our reports from the council committees, and I'm going to move the mic all the way down over to Councilman Striplin and ask that he just pass it along as he gets through to the next councilman.
I do. Members of the council, I have two reports for you. First of all, on item number six on our agenda this evening is a contract for services with Jackson Thornton Utilities Consultants for a wastewater rate study. Mayor's already covered that, so I won't go into too much detail, but I will say this, that in your resolution this evening, there is a time limit on that contract of ninety days. Jackson Thornton will have ninety days from the moment it's signed until they have to report to us. But going along with that is the current study that's already being, being done by Goodwood Mills and Kaywood, which is a facilities and infrastructure study. I do want to report to you that so far, they, they have already met with Rick Teague and his staff on four different occasions. They are summarizing our capital improvement needs. They're analyzing the operations of the department, and they are looking extensively into the collection system. Once they complete that, they will then begin to complete the capital needs assessment. The wastewater committee, over the next week or so, will be meeting with Goodwood Mills and Kaywood and Rick at a wastewater facility to, so that we can see firsthand some of the findings that they have and some of the needs that Rick has currently in his department. And then after that, the, the study will be finalized, presented to the wastewater committee, and then the wastewater committee would have an opportunity to meet with Rick, go over it, make sure that it covers everything that, that we had hoped that it, that it would, which we're, we're confident that it will. And then the wastewater committee will bring that study to the full council for, for its information, and then we can move forward from there. But these two items go together. The rate study and the needs assessment will go hand-in-hand of being able to get Rick where he needs to be in his department to make sure that the services that are provided to the citizens are adequate and make sure that, that we are able to pay for those services and any upgrades that we may need in the future. The second report that I will bring to you is on our redistricting committee. The committee has met with Mr. Duke. We have begun to finalize a draft for, for the council to look at. We will be meeting, hopefully, towards the end of this week to look at the possibility of a draft proposal. Once we have an opportunity to react to that and get the information from Mr. Duke, we will then bring that map back to the council. We are still hopeful that we will be able to have that map presented to the council for its consideration and a public hearing by the end of August, so that we would be able to adopt it hopefully in September, which would give us a full year under which to make sure that the citizens know where they live and in whose district they will live, under which council district. So I bring those two items to you this evening. Thank you. Before I leave, Mr. President, item number six, the finance committee unanimously recommends that, the finance committee, I'm so used to that. The wastewater committee unanimously recommends resolution number six to the full council this evening. Thank you.
It's all right. Old habits die hard.
No report.
No, thank you.
You've had the finance director give you the financials currently, and that will stand as the report also from the finance committee, unless the other two members of the finance committee have anything to add. Councilman Striplin, Councilman Wood, you have anything to add to what Mr. Mosley presented? Okay. We're going to move into our agenda, and it's a little different from the, what we usually do. Usually I assign each agenda item to a specific council member to read. However, considering the technical difficulty that we're having tonight, I'm going to impose on our present pro tempore, Councilman Fink, to read and introduce each one of the six items. Councilman Fink, will you introduce resolution number one, which is to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title XI, Chapter 67, Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, as amended?
Yes, sir. Whereas an abundance of overgrown grass or weeds, number one, is injurious to the public health, safety, and general welfare by providing a breeding ground and shelter for rats, mice, snakes, and mosquitoes and other vermin. Number two, may cause the further spread of weeds. Number three, may hide debris such as glass or metal that could inflict injury on a person going to such property. And number four, may also pose a fire hazard and respiratory hazard. And whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville declared in Resolution Book two thousand and eleven, page one oh eight, that the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds at, at various addresses in the City of Prattville constituted a public nuisance and set a public hearing to discuss said nuisances. And whereas notice as required by eleven dash sixty-seven dash sixty-two of the Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, as amended, was provided in the Prattville progress by certified mail and by signage on the subject property. And whereas the Prattville Planning Department has inspected the properties listed in Resolution Book two thousand and eleven, page one oh eight, adopted on June eleventh, two thousand and eleven, and determined that the public nuisance still exists. And whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville held the required public hearing at six P.M. on July nineteenth, two thousand and eleven, permitting the owners of said properties listed in Resolution Book two thousand and eleven, page one oh eight, to present evidence, objections, and protest regarding the proposed removal of weeds. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville declares that the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds on the properties continue to be a public nuisance. Three thirty-nine Bedford Terrace, three oh one Marlet Drive, the vacant lot west of four thirty-nine West Fourth Street, six twenty-five Wisteria Road, and two twenty-four Woodvale Road. Be it further resolved that the mayor shall have the overgrown grass and weeds on the property listed above cut or removed using city forces or the private contractors listed in Attachment A. Any property owner shall have the right to have any weeds removed at his or her own expense, provided the removal is done prior to the commencement of work by employees or agents of the City of Prattville. The mayor shall keep an accounting of all costs related to the removal of overgrown grass and weeds and report such costs to the City Council following their removal. So moved, Mr. President.
Resolution, resolution number one has been moved by Councilman Fink. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Councilman Miller?
Council, Mr. Duke's not with us tonight.
Okay.
Oh, okay. I guess a couple of things, because we're handling several of these during the summer because that's the growth season, especially with this recent rain, but they, you know, every one of us has our, our, our locations within our districts, but mine is the USA Gas Station, which is right now my number one, and it did get cut, but those trash receptacles are overflowing. So it's sort of like it's more than just cutting the lawn, and it's, it's, it's just a mess. They've been stuffed full, they're overflowing, you know, broken glass, the whole nine yards. And so that's one thing I would just bring to your attention, and if there's any way that we can address that part of it beyond just the weeds and so forth. And the second thing I would ask again is, based on a couple of meetings ago, Councilman Striplin's, I guess, asking if there wasn't something we could do more aggressive sort of resonate with me, because I've asked if we could do something with the frequent flyers, the people that habitually pushes up to the edge. And I know I'm sounding like a broken record, but that continues to be an issue for me in particular, and I suspect for some of the other councilmen with their districts. So I just want to keep bringing that back to the front burner in terms of, you know, what can we do and what is state law permissive for us to do, and really see if there's a way we can find a way to do it instead of finding ways not to do it.
You want to answer that?
Councilman, we certainly look for ways to, to address these problems, the frequent flyers, as you call them, which frankly, this year, we haven't had that many, but the ones that we do have end up going through a dual process. We, we seek to get the property cut through this process, but we also seek to, to have them before the municipal court judge to, to see if that's more motivation to stop being a frequent flyer. As far as the USA Gas Station, we are working that, trying to look, see if we can work that as a dilapidated property. We may not be able to, but hopefully, we, we can make a claim in the bankruptcy court or some other action to, to get them to clean those properties up. But we're, we're working towards resolving those issues.
Any further comments on this resolution? Any other questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor of this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the resolution is approved. Resolution number two is to declare a freeze on employee healthcare premium contributions. Councilman Fink, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville for fiscal year two thousand and eleven implemented a number of budget-saving measures to include a reduction in force furlough policy, no merit raises, and a hiring freeze. And whereas for calendar year two thousand and twelve, the health insurance premiums increased to twenty-five dollars for each subscriber. And whereas these measures have affected city employees' livelihood, and whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville would like to ensure that there will be no increase to the employees for their health insurance premiums for calendar year two thousand and twelve to offset these hardships. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the health insurance premium charged to each, each subscriber shall not increase for calendar year two thousand and twelve. Mr. President, I so move.
Resolution number two has been moved by Councilman Fink. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Councilman Fink?
I, I would make a motion to hold this for two weeks so the finance committee can have an opportunity to review this and get input from H.R. as far as possible implications with any increased charges for Blue Cross Blue Shield for the next fiscal year. Is two weeks enough time? Will you have the, the results or the quotes back from Blue Cross Blue Shield by then?
Probably. I didn't contact anyone, I don't have a date for the renewal meeting.
What do you think would be reasonable? First meeting in September? Till the first meeting in September?
Councilman Fink has asked that we hold this until the, our first regularly scheduled meeting in September. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Miller. Is there any discussion on the move, motion to hold? All those in favor of the motion to hold this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, this resolution holds until the first meeting of September two thousand and eleven. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance to amend Ordinance Book two thousand and eleven, page twenty-two, Article Two, Building Code, Section one oh five dash twenty-four. Councilman Fink, will you introduce this ordinance?
Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville that Article Two, Building Code, Section one oh five dash twenty-four A of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Prattville is hereby amended to read as follows. Section two oh two, definitions, bed and breakfast operation. A private home, inn, or other unique residential facility located in a structure of historical significance defined as a structure designated by the Historical Preservation Commission or a building located within the boundaries of the historical district, offering bed and breakfast accommodations and one daily meal, and having less than four guest rooms furnished for pay, with guests staying not more than fourteen days, and where the innkeeper resides on the premises of the property or immediately adjacent to it. Guest rooms shall be established and maintained distinct and separate from the innkeeper's quarters. Be it further ordained that Section one oh five dash two four B is hereby amended to add the following. Section N. one one zero three point two point one insulation. Supply ducts and attics shall be insulated to a minimum of R six effective July one, two thousand and thirteen. Supply ducts located in attic space shall be insulated to a minimum of R eight. All other ducts shall be insulated to a minimum of R six. All other provisions of this ordinance, not herein amended, shall remain in full force and effect. This ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and publication required by law. So moved, Mr. President.
Councilman Fink has moved this ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. By point of order, this must be, this must hold unless there's a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Suspense, uh, motion to suspend the rules is made by Councilman Argo. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wood. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules?
Mr. President.
Councilman Argo.
Yes, sir. All this is, is this is a cleaning up of the ordinance that we had before us at our prior meeting, two weeks ago. We've had Fire Marshal Dallas Johnson has been working with, with all those that are concerned to make sure that our ordinance is in compliance, especially on the insulation issues that we had at the last meeting. We had some questions about R six and R eight, and then also the, the language as it applies to bed and breakfast. It has now been cleaned up. This ordinance tonight is just an amendment to that ordinance, so it's just cleaning up what we had concerns about at our last meeting. So I encourage the council to move forward and let's, let's go ahead and get this adopted.
Any further discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Seeing no more, all those in favor of suspending the rules signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing no opposition, the rules are suspended and the ordinance is properly before us. Is there any further discussion on the ordinance before us? All those in favor of adopting this ordinance signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, this ordinance is approved. Next item is a resolution to regulate employment of school crossing guards and authorize the hiring of nineteen crossing guards for the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve school year. Councilman Fink, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville is aware of the need to protect, protect its children at or near the schools from traffic hazards through proper regulation and control of traffic. And whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville adopted Resolution Book two thousand and ten, page eighty-one, requiring all new hires to be approved by the finance committee and the city council. And whereas all crossing guards, all school crossing guards will be hired with an hourly rate of nine dollars and seventy-nine cents per hour, with an estimated total budget cost of one hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and two cents. And whereas crossing guards are to be paid three hours per day worked and three hours holiday pay for any city holiday that falls within the school calendar and is a regularly scheduled workday for the employee. And whereas crossing guards will not receive sick leave, annual leave, or any life or health insurance benefits. And whereas the City of Prattville will provide uniforms to each crossing guard. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby sets the employment benefits of school crossing guards as expressed above and authorizes the hiring of nineteen crossing guards for the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve school year. Mr. President, I so move.
Councilman Fink has moved this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Striplin. Any discussion on this proposed resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? I see no opposition, this resolution is approved. Next item is a resolution to set a public hearing to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title XI, Chapter sixty-seven of the Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, as amended. Councilman Fink, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Whereas an abundance of overgrown grass or weeds, one, is injurious to the public health, safety, and general welfare by providing a breeding ground and shelter for rats, mice, snakes, and mosquitoes and other vermin. Number two, may cause the further spread of weeds. Number three, may hide debris such as glass or metal that could inflict injury on a person going to such property. And four, may, may also pose a fire hazard and respiratory hazard. And whereas eleven dash sixty-seven dash one of the Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, as amended, permits the City Council of the City of Prattville to declare an abundance of overgrown grass and weeds to be a public nuisance. And whereas the Prattville Planning Department has inspected the properties at the following addresses and determine the existence of an abundance of overgrown grass and weeds. One fifty-six Durden Road, one fifteen Melmar, the vacant lot next to three oh seven Fisk, a vacant lot next to six twenty-nine Lower Kingston Road, a vacant lot on Easy Street at Upper Kingston, seven oh eight Waverly Lane. Now therefore be it resolved that- Now therefore be it resolved that, number one, the City Council of the City of Prattville declares the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds at the above-listed addresses to be a public nuisance; and two, the owners of said property, as they appear in the records of the Otoga County or Elmore County Revenue Commissioners, are ordered to abate the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds. And number three, the owners of said property are ordered to appear before the City Council of the City of Prattville at a public hearing at 6:00 PM on August 16, 2011, in Prattville City Hall. Notice of such hearing and a copy of this resolution shall be sent by certified mail to owners of said property. Mr. President, I so move again.
Resolution has been moved by Councilman Fink. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wood. Any discussion on the proposed resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor of this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, this resolution is passed. Last item on our agenda is a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract for services with Jackson Thornton Utilities Consultants for a wastewater rate study with a cost not to exceed $18,000. Councilman Fink, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Whereas the City of Prattville wastewater facilities are in need of updating and improvement, and whereas the city's wastewater facilities are currently being studied and evaluated by an outside engineering firm, and whereas municipal wastewater rates and fees are not included in the study, and whereas it is necessary to ensure that the City of Prattville's wastewater rates and fees adequately cover the cost of providing this service, and whereas the most cost-effective way to accomplish this goal is through a comprehensive rate analysis and comparison study, which will address short-term and long-term goals in an attempt to make this department self-sufficient. And whereas Jackson Thornton Utilities Consultants were engaged by the City of Prattville in 2005 to provide a similar analysis, and because of its knowledge of the city's wastewater rate structure, has the necessary expertise to perform such a study. And whereas it is the desire of the city to enter into a contract with Jackson Thornton Utilities Consultants for a rate study of the wastewater department. And whereas this study will be completed within 90 days upon signing the contract. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby approves the expenditures of an amount not to exceed $18,000 to Jackson Thornton Utilities Consultants to conduct a rate study. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that funds not to exceed $18,000 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid from the wastewater miscellaneous services line item. Mr. President, I so move.
This resolution has been moved by Councilman Fink. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. Before we can vote on this, since this is not a budgeted amount, the rules must be suspended if we're going to deal with this business tonight. Do I hear them?
So moved, Mr. President.
Councilman Argo has moved that we suspend the rules. Seconded by Councilman Miller. Any discussion on suspension of the rules? Seeing none, all those in favor of suspending the rules signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? I see none. Rules are suspended, and the resolution is properly before us. Is there any discussion about this resolution? Any comments or discussion? All those in favor of this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? I see none. This resolution is approved and passed. That completes our regular agenda. Is there anything coming from the floor, from the council? Okay. At this time, we will open the floor back up for public comments, does not have to pertain to the items on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to address the City Council on anything as it pertains to city business tonight? Yes, sir. Come forward, please. I know who you are, but please identify us for the record with your name and your address. You may need the mic.
Not a problem. My name's Coral Hawthorne, 704 Emerald Drive. My business is regarding three items on the finance report tonight. And I was here last time, and I was asking how much the 1% sales tax provided. Now, as I understand it, we don't have those figures until the 20th, which is tomorrow. Is that correct, Doug?
Yeah.
Oh, I, okay. You want to explain that, please?
The sales tax are, have to be postmarked by the 20th, so usually, they come in after that. The large portion of those will come in the 21st to the 25th, and usually, we are still getting them in and getting them entered until the 30th. So we usually cut it off at the 30th of the month.
Is there a way that we don't have to come to the meeting to find out how much those numbers are? Is there a way that, if you look in the paper, the Montgomery Advisor, which I get sometimes during the week, I'm supposed to get it every day, but I get it sometimes, and the progress, every month, they do a very good job, Montgomery does, of reporting all of their income, and they give percentages, and they give amounts, and that type of thing. I would like to see us, and Mayor, I think you would agree with this, we need to know exactly where we are. I mean, this is what this is all about right now, is money. And I think you're doing a great job with raising the income and this type of thing. But let me just give you an example. I heard tonight that, I believe, that our income for the month was 8.9%. Is that correct? Over last year, correct? Well, is that $10? Is that $1,000? Is that $500,000? I don't know what that means. So if you could say, it's 8.9%, and maybe $50,000, now I have an idea how much our income is over the other. It could be $10, and then that, and you understand what I'm asking? I think we would like to know exactly what the amounts are in dollar figures, and that's, you have that. If you can figure the 8.9%, you can sure tell me what the amount is. I just think it would be a clarification for everybody, so I don't sit back there and say, well, 8.9%? How much is that? I don't know. I think it would help everybody. So it's kind of a full disclosure of where we're going. I would just ask that we might be able to improve on that. Secondly, the 1%, which I asked for last month, and I'm coming back to that, if we could kind of have that printed in the progress or something, prior to having to come, because if you don't come to the meeting, you really don't hear that figure until after, after the meeting, and sometimes, they don't even put the amount in. They just say, well, we had a good month. I kind of harp on this, because I'm, I kind of, that's my background, and I just don't like to know that I have a percentage, but I don't have a friggin' clue where it's coming from. So if you could help us on that. And then, I have just a question, and maybe it was a humor, a question of humor, but was it about the mayor's car allowance? Wasn't taken, was, can you explain what you meant by that?
There's a resolution on the books that the mayor gets a $1,000 car allowance. He has not taken that car allowance. I've actually already, I've already cut the check. He hasn't taken that car allowance, because he doesn't want to take it yet. That's his choice. We've cut the check, but we're waiting on him to take it. We're still in possession of that check. Also, to answer your question, we provide sales tax revenue information to the Montgomery Advertiser on a monthly basis. And the 8.9%, which is year-to-date that we're up, is $2,018,000.
So it's, it's up $2,018,000?
From last year.
From last year. That's significant. And this is why I'm saying, I think we need to know this. I mean, that's, hey, accolades to everybody. That's great. And that's all I'm trying to get to. And Mayor, on your allowance, I'll close with this. I didn't think that the allowance, if our city is such a bad shape that we're having trouble with a car allowance, I was going to kind of contribute a little bit to your car, give you, give you my credit card for some gas or something, because I didn't think that that was, should have been a major issue. But anyhow, if, if...
Thank you. I won't take the gas, but if you want to wash it, I might be able to entertain that. But, no, seriously, the, to date, I have not accepted any of the car allowance on it. It's, I think, the resolution act says it's $1,000 per month, but actually, what we figured out in the budget for me was $100 per month, and I have not accepted any of that $100 per month, or the $1,000 per month either. But one of my goals is to, to get all of our financial figures that we can post, to get all those online. Hopefully, we're going to have that really set up, so we can have all that put online by the beginning of our 2012 budget.
Well, I do want to thank you for taking the $900 less. That's, that's a good contribution, along, along with your other contributions that you've given too. So, thank you.
$900 per month.
$900 per month?
Yes.
I stand corrected.
Any questions for Mr. Hawthorne before he leaves us? Councilman Bowles?
I think you're missing the biggest point in what our Finance Director gave us tonight. The $2 million, that $2 million increase is really good for the businesses, for everybody, but where everybody really gets that, boy, is the $6 million they haven't spent versus last year. That's huge. That wasn't easy, that wasn't politically correct. That was a lot of hard work on the Finance Committee, a lot of hard work on the mayor, a lot of hard work on all of our employees out here that saved that $6 million versus last year. And I just want to reiterate it again, that's what, to me, screams out more than anything in this report, is them saving that $6 million. That's an $8 million swing from last year.
Maybe I didn't hear all the report, but was that, that's, that's a very important fact, and that should also be saved. Was that stated in the report?
Yes.
I don't mean that. I don't have the report. I'm out here as in the audience. Would I know that if I didn't have the report?
Well, I said it earlier.
Oh, I'm...
I want to reiterate, that's very important.
Oh, that's, that's excellent. I think you're, you're right. Councilman Bowles, that's an excellent comment.
Any further from Mr. Hawthorne?
Thank you, Mr. Hawthorne.
Thank you.
Always a pleasure to have you with us. Anyone else like to make a comment or address the council on any, any item at all? Okay, we'll move into our final comments. Mayor, do you have any wrap-up comments? Councilman Striplin?
Just one brief. Pass that down. We need to get it over.
I express appreciation to all the city employees for their continued dedication in helping the city move forward. Thank you very much.
No comment.
No, sir.
No.
Our next city council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, August 2, 2011, right here in this room at 6:00 PM. This time, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made by Councilman Bowles. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Councilman Striplin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition by a like sign? I hear none. We adjourn.